Ms. Carrasella?
Here.
Ms. Corr?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Mr. Hayward?
Here.
Ms. McThebola?
Here.
Dr. Robinson?
Here.
Ms. Scorpelli?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson, will you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of meeting. In accordance with P.L. 1975, Chapter 231, notice of tonight's meeting was mailed to the Record in the Ridgewood News on January 3, 2023. Notice of this meeting was also mailed to the Borough Clerk and was posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education Office in the Administration Building on the same date. Copies of the procedures in effect for regular board meetings are available for the public at tonight's meeting. Dr. Robinson, will you read the mission statement?
Yes. The Glen Rock School District, founded on principles of education and partnership with a supportive community, provides an exceptional education to all students to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens.
Thank you. Dr. Charleston?
So we have a couple of presentations tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rinderknecht.
All right. I provided the district's audit for year ended June 30, 2022, and at this point in time, I'm going to call Mr. Paul Lurch from Lurch, Vincie, and Bliss up to do a brief overview of last year's audit, key word being "brief." There's a big snowstorm coming, Paul. We want to...
That's it. Yeah, much better. So, good evening and thanks for having me. I'm here to present the results of the audit, which ended in June of 2022. And I'll just talk about a few topics. I'll go through this. If anybody has any specific questions, by all means just stop me and I'll respond to any questions you might have. So, the audit itself has three opinions in it. We have a financial statement opinion. We have an opinion including the single audit on internal controls and compliance with governmental auditing standards. And we also have one on major controls, internal controls for major programs. So those three audit opinions, and there's one up front and there's two in the back, those have unmodified opinions, which is, in essence, another way of saying a clean opinion. It's our technical way of saying it. And that's what you want to see, and that's typically what you'll see in most Board of Educations. As a matter of fact, this particular year, I don't have any boards that have a modified opinion. If you have a modified opinion, there are some serious issues going on within that district financially. So that's good news. So we have clean opinions in all three. The district was subject to a state and federal single audit. And really what that means is that any time you have and expend more than $750,000 in either state or federal monies, it triggers what we identify or call a single audit. It simply means that once you get to that trigger point, we have to determine which of those programs are major programs. And then what we have to do is we do additional testing. We go into the compliance supplements, pull out the grant requirements for those particular programs, and then we test the specifics of those compliance requirements. So it's additional auditing that's done any time you're getting state and federal money. Obviously, everyone's aware that we're into now a year, I guess it's year three of the ARPER-ESR Coronavirus Aid Cares Act. So that's triggering a lot of the additional testing that's happening. I could tell you from a federal side, you're technically not a low-risk auditor because we haven't had two years back-to-back of federal requirements for a single audit. So when we went to do the audit testing for your federal program, it just meant that we couldn't, we had to test a higher level of expenditures. Normally, you only have a 20% coverage if you're a low-risk auditor because you weren't audited in two consecutive years back. We couldn't classify you as a low-risk auditor, which meant that we had to test 40% of those expenditures. So, having said all of that, you had about, and I'm going to round it off, on federal programs, expended 1.7 million. And again, the majority of that is really coming through the American Rescue Plan, the Educational ESR Plan, and the Cares Act. State-wise, you had $16.8 million in total expenditures or awards that were expended through the program. And we did test general aid. We did test some of the ARPER money, as I indicated before. Again, if we found any compliance issues, we would be reporting those compliance issues in those opinions in the back, as well as in our comments and recommendations. We don't have any comments. There were no deficiencies noted, no irregularities, no unallowable expenditures, those type of items that would have been picked up. So again, a clean audit on the state and federal single audit component as well. GASB 75, believe it or not, we're in our fifth year of this reporting model. And the reason I mention it, I know probably not everyone's really interested in GASB 75 as I would be, but I mention it because it's the main reason we're having these delays in the audit requirements and the deadlines. So this is now the fifth year in a row that the audit deadline went from what I'll classify as a January 5 normal deadline. We're into March. It's actually March 17. So this week is now the new deadline. And the reason being is that there's certain pension information that we need to report in the report, in the financial statements. And that comes from the Division of Pensions. They hire an external audit group to come in and perform those calculations. And it just, for whatever reason, and I don't really know the reasons, it's never produced timely. So, you know, this is, like I said, I mean, now we're into our fifth year, so maybe it's a definition of insanity. I keep expecting a different result. And I don't know, quite frankly, I don't think I expect a different result next year. So, it doesn't mean we can't finish the audits. It doesn't mean we can't go through and even present. I've been presenting audits for the last three months. So as we finish the field work, we can't really produce a report. You have a report, only because the numbers were released. Otherwise, I would come in and just talk about equity, and I would talk about findings and recommendations. So, that's just a little bit of a nuance. So I don't know that it's ever going to change. They keep promising us that it will change. New for this year, we had a new GASB, which is 87, dealing with leases. Just as a general term, really, back in the old days, actually, last year, we were required to distinguish between a capital lease, which is a physical capital item, an asset, and an operating lease. Now, the authorities had basically said there's no such terminology anymore. It's all capital financing or financing agreements. So there's no operating in capital. Everything gets recorded. It's, they're thinking of it from a right to use an asset. Even though you don't own it, if you have a copier that you're going to give back over a five-year period, it's a right to use the asset. So we need to record the activity. It's a little bit of a different distinguishment. For this particular year, I did talk a little bit about some of the funding that you received. So over the past, I guess it's two and a half years on the ARPER-ESR cares, the accumulation of those revenues or grants is almost $1.9 million. That's just dealing with the COVID funding sources. And those are large numbers everywhere. But I just figured it's something, it's buried in the last page of our footnote. I thought maybe you'd want to be aware of how much has gone through, accumulated from the beginning of that particular situation or program. So it's $1.9 million. I'm going to look at some of the financials, and then we'll talk at the end about where we are as far as comments or recommendations, if we have any. A little bit about food service, and for those board members, I'm going to direct you to page 25 of the large report. And then we'll talk about equity from the operating account. So, page 25 is a statement of revenues and expenditures, and it deals with the food service as well as the community school. And so you can see, these are the revenue schedules, revenue and expense schedules. So if you look on the left-hand column, the food service component, pretty much a break-even. The year before is inactive because of COVID. Now it's back to an active status here. So we had roughly $635,000 of revenues, offset by expenditures of the $637. So, pretty much a break-even here. I think if you look at the community school, and that's probably more important to look at. So here, we had tuition revenues of $1.451, $1,451,000. And we had expenses of $1,147,000. So the operating profit is now up $300,000 in the current year activity. If I was to look at the year before, we were actually down $200,000. And then we had an additional transfer out in the year before of $100,000, as we were transferring money back into the general operating account. So we went from a negative or a reduction of $300,000 in the 2021 year to now the 2122 year, producing a profit of $300,000. So your equity went from $200, up now to $500,000. So you had a very successful year as far as the community school. A big turnaround. Okay. I'm going to go now to your general fund, budgetary basis. And where I'm going to go is page 75. So page 75 is really your budget document. It's your statement of operations, revenues, and expense, based upon your budget. And that's the most important document that you'll find in this particular audit. It's on a budgetary basis, is what you're concerned about. And we'll talk about some equity and fund balance. But if you were to look underneath the actual column, you can see that on the very bottom, that the fund balance, budgetary basis, we ended the year with $13,905,214. It's an increase from last year of $911,943. So what makes up the $13,905? I think that's what's important, and we'll kind of focus on that. And you can see, when you look at this, we have restricted components. And then we have assigned areas as well. And I'm going to start from the bottom up and work into this page. So when you look at the $13,905, our first line there is assigned, which is basically $2.8 million. That's your free equity. So at the end of June of 2022, you had a free balance of $2,810,344, very similar to last year. Last year, it was $2,718,000. And one thing you want to keep in mind is that free balance is based on the 4% calculation. So this is the end of the 4%. That was another act by Trenton, COVID Act. What they decided to do two years ago was allow districts to retain 4% of their adjusted expenditures. We were always limited to 2%. If I go back in the day, I mean, it was 4%. It was a 6% at one time as well, but I'm dating myself now. But it's been 2% for quite a few number of years. Because of COVID, they decided that they were going to allow additional monies to be retained unrestricted, which is what you did. So you're at 4%. So that $2,810 is based on 4%. We won't see that again. And really, 1% is about $1,040,000, $1,050, 2%, rather. So what you'll see is that that number should drop somewhere around $1,040,000 next year. And really, what it means is that, and we'll talk about as we progress through this, that if you have excess money, or you have monies in excess of your allowable minimum, which is just 4% or 2%, it can go into various components or buckets. And that's what we do on a normal basis. When the board meets in June, you do a resolution which authorizes the business administrator to transfer in excess monies into either emergency reserve, maintenance reserve, or capital reserve. And that's exactly what happens here. So we're just going to be working off a lower base. Next year, when we come here, or when we do that, we're not going to be looking at 2.8. You'll be looking at 1.7 or so, 1.6 million is the max number. So if I was to go up this scale here, we can see we have designated $3,000. It's really not important. It just means money that's being appropriated in the budget. We have reserve for encumbrances of $498,000. That means monies are restricted for goods and services, which were ordered, not delivered. A prime example would be myself, right? So the Board of Education hires us to do the audit. You execute a purchase order, you reserve it in an encumference. But we're not doing, physically doing the work until after the year end. And then, that's when it's liquidated and rolls to the next year. If, for instance, you were ordering goods or services, and they were delivered, yet not paid, it would be in accounts payable. So that's a distinction between that. Then moving up, we have reserve for unemployment claims, $774,000 relatively unchanged from the year before. It's just monies that are set aside, that the board had previously set aside to fund unemployment claims. This is another COVID situation. Most Board of Educations have not received bills for over a two-year period. I know they did start to populate some of these bills. Again, and again, the question really is, is how much is Trenton going to contribute towards the unemployment claims for each Board of Education? I've seen where they've actually taken a quarter from two years ago, two and a half years ago, and they've reduced it by 50% because the state was going to fund it through some of their excess ARPER monies. But this money's set aside for that specific purpose. Emergency reserve, so emergency reserve is $209,496 unchanged from the year before. Just means it's money that's set aside for an emergent need. Used to be very difficult to get at. It's a little easier now because you can get at it for security needs. So that's certainly accessible. Then going up, the last reserve that you have is capital reserve. So we have two components of capital reserve. If you take the combination, it's $6.3 million in capital reserve. You started out with $5.9 in the beginning of the year. So you've increased it with budget appropriations, as well as your resolution in June, to the tune of $3.9 million, and then utilized $3.5 million through the budget cycle. So it's kind of unchanged a little bit here. It's $400,000 up from the previous years. The difference or the distinction between capital and designated, the designated portion of the $1,006, I just want to make sure I'm reading it correct, the $4,00654, that amount's designated and being utilized in your current budget. So you're in your '22, '23 budget. It's being utilized for projects. And again, capital reserve, as it indicates, it's to be used for facility improvements. Then we come up to the last component, and that's excess surplus. So last year's excess surplus was $1,798,759. That's being utilized in your current year budget. And then you have the excess surplus from June of '22. And this is where we get into the calculation component. So you do a resolution in June, and you authorize transfers up into a certain dollar value. And really, what happens when we come to the end of the year, we sit with the business administrator, and we talk about it. And we say, okay, listen, here's why we're authorized to transfer into either maintenance or capital reserve. But it's really a component of excess surplus, because that's an amount that has to be put in your budget to balance the subsequent year's budget as a revenue line item. And if that number fluctuates too much, it becomes difficult from a planning perspective. And that's why those numbers typically don't fluctuate all that much. And that's certainly not something that's done by chance. It's something that's done through consultation with the business administrator. So when you develop, and I know, I think you're voting on it tonight, this is '23, '24, right? Right. So that amount is going to have the excess surplus of $1,521 as a minimum number in there. Okay. Any questions? Okay. I am going to talk about comments and recommendations. I have one comment in the report, and that's in the smaller of the two reports, but I'll just talk about it in general terms. It's, you know, we do a tremendous amount of auditing, and we look at some balance sheet items, obviously, and transactional items. And here, we're looking at encumbrances that were reported in the capital project fund. Certain amount of those encumbrances in the capital project fund that were remaining on the balance sheet at the end of June were invalid. We cancel some of those, and we move some of those to accounts payable. The reason that they were canceled is because projects were complete, but they weren't canceled through the system. So as I indicated, year-end, you just need to go through and make sure that if you have an outstanding purchase order, that it's a valid remaining purchase order. So when projects are going through the process, if it's completed, you need to go through and make sure that you actually cancel that remaining purchase order. And that's the difference of what we found. I guess I want to just close by saying that I certainly want to recognize Mike. I know that this will be the last audit that I'm doing with Michael, at least here, I believe. We never know where Mike's going to land, right? But it's been a pleasure, and I think that, you know, as a board, and certainly as a professional, I'm very, I'm sad in a way because I'm going to miss his professionalism. And I think that each board member, certainly who's at an ability or a time period to experience Michael as a professional, knows that, you know, he's done a wonderful job for the district. You know, it's been a long run. I know I've been here ever since Mike's been here, and I wish him well. And I think he's done a terrific job, and I'm sure everyone appreciates the job he's done as well. Good luck, Michael.
Thank you.
With regards to the audit, the last comment I wanted to make is I wanted to extend my appreciation to the business office staff, and the district's administration at large, and right down to the staff, dealing with them. You know, the staff has been phenomenal with all these crazy travel regulations for conferences, workshops, you know. They know if there's a question, reach out to me or a staff member in the business office, and they'll provide the appropriate guidance. Having said that, in audit, and I'm proud of this audit, and I just want to be clear, and I think I've said this for 19 years, it's not me and my work. It's reflective of my office staff, the district's administration at large, and ultimately, the entire district staff. Having said that, thank you very much,
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks for having me. Bye-bye.
So we do have our students getting set up, but we have a Hamilton presentation. Hamilton presentation will be quick. I don't want to keep the students waiting. So, okay.
Good evening, everybody. My name is David Diddy-Mamoff. I'm with Parret Samjin Architects. I'm the project manager for the addition going on at Alexander Hamilton School. And Mike asked me to come by tonight and give you an update on where we are, where we've been over the last few months in regards to the construction that I'm sure you've seen as you drive by the school. So to give you a brief overview, we broke ground in October, and the work primarily began with a lot of the underground trenching, demolition of existing underground utilities that needed to be moved and diverted so that the construction of the building could take place. So you see on the left there, there's some underground piping that started going in primarily for stormwater drainage on the site from where the building is. If you replace a grass with building, you're going to need to put the water someplace. On the right-hand side, there is formwork that was for the footings, the concrete footings that are going to be poured. But that's what consisted of November, primarily a lot of digging and a lot of demolition work. Moving into December, the footings are now poured. The foundation walls are starting to go in. You can see in both pictures, two courses of CMU block, masonry block. That is the foundation wall that's going to support the rest of the building as they go further up. Once we got into January, you can see we're really out of the ground now. The exterior and interior walls are starting to go up. The gaps in the wall are openings where the windows are going to go. On the, in the left picture, on the right-hand side, that is what's going to become the main corridor of the addition. And the classrooms are on either side. Once we got into February, the construction of the walls was finished. We got to the top. We started putting in the structural steel that's going to support the roof of the building. The masonry walls are load-bearing, and the steel is bearing directly on the walls. So there's no columns or anything like that. And we did finish framing the openings of all the doors and the windows. So the loose lintels are in place, and you can see that in the right-hand side picture. Continuing through February, we, once the steel was in place, the roof deck was put down. So now it's really starting to look like a building. We have a roof now. On the right-hand side, you can see the rough plumbing is in place. This is going to be enclosed with walls, but this is going to become the single-use restrooms that are going to be in between or dedicated to each classroom. And then into March, we continued completing the building envelope. On the left-hand side, there's a coating now on the block. That's the waterproofing. Shortly soon, there's going to be insulation and brick built up along that wall around the entire outside. And that'll complete the exterior wall. On the right-hand side, you can see more roughing work for plumbing and electrical, so that we can supply the rooms with all the different systems that they're going to need. And then here's another couple images of inside the building. On the left-hand side, you can see the corridor. There is gravel now that's being compacted so that it can be prepped for the concrete slab to be poured. That'll be our floor slab on which floor finishes will be installed. And then on the right-hand side, more roughing and electrical. The slab will be poured over all of that conduit to feed those electrical panels. So, that's about where we are now. We're a little further along than the previous meeting where we had planned to come talk to you. So we were able to add a little bit more of the fun shots, the stuff that's a little more finished, and something that actually looks, starting to look like a building, so.
So the big question everybody has is substantial completion is still on track?
Yes. The substantial completion date is set for July 15. And we're targeting that date. We're keeping close tabs on the contractor to make sure that what they say they're going to do on a given week in their schedule, that they're sticking to it.
We've been very fortunate with the weather. You know, we didn't have any significant storms. It's enabled us to march on. So I don't anticipate any problems. I know Dr. Charleston reported out, I believe, at our last meeting. Both he and I have signed off on the furniture order for all the classrooms, so that's completed. I'm waiting for Rich Santos to finalize all the technology needs, and now it's just a matter of substantial completion.
Yep.
Any questions?
I just want to say thank you for this presentation. It's great to see the pictures of what's going on. I don't know if any of us... I don't know if any of us, I've never gone over to look at the site, but from the pictures, it looks like the contractors actually was very neat in how they were working in the area, which was great, especially with school being in session. So I want to thank Mr. Much for being, you know, overseeing this project. I know this is a big project to be overseeing, so thank you for that.
Thank you. We've been lucky with this contractor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Corey?
So I get to oversee this project every day at school pickup, and it's been a fantastic integration in with busy afternoons, busy mornings with the families and the traffic coordination. That's a big part of keeping the community out of a dangerous space, but keeping them right next to it so this can keep moving. And so I want to thank that effort and that priority on it, too.
Yeah, I have to give Don significant credit for that because during the planning of the, of the project, during the drawings, it was Don's paramount priority that however this was going to be built during the school year, that the school activities wouldn't be too heavily impacted. So we did work with him and the principal to develop a staging plan, making sure that traffic was directed accordingly and that the proper barriers and safety precautions were implemented on site. So a lot of credit to Don for that.
I've actually checked with the principal, except for one period, one day, one of the teachers in one of those end classrooms moved their class because they had to do something, the contractors had to do something right against that wall. It was a little out, that was one period, one day, they moved to the media center for a period, so. Other than that, Ms. Pridies has been extremely happy.
Yeah, I was going to comment on that, just the level of noise hasn't been there. I'm also there often. I have a fifth grader, so he is at the end of that hallway, and there just hasn't been any really disruption, so thank you for organizing it so well and being thoughtful.
Yeah, he's worked with us while doing those type of issues, either after school, before, or even on Saturdays.
Yeah, it's noticeable, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have Mr. Cusack back there, get our students. Up here, we have our high school robotics engineering team, participants. And I believe, yes, Mr. Muir and Mr. Lockett are here as well as our advisors. So, Mr. Cusack, we'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. Just like to thank you for having us here tonight. Students are going to set up and demonstrate the robot for you. It's really my pleasure and privilege to stand up here and introduce this group because they started working in late August and competed all the way through the beginning of March this year. So they've worked very hard, a lot of hours after school spent working on what they do. So I'm going to introduce Mr. Lockett and Mr. Muir and let them introduce you to the team. So thank you very much.
Good evening, folks. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Mr. Robert Lockett, and to my side I have Mr. Tim Murey, and we are the coaches, proud coaches of the Glen Rock High School Robotics Team, affectionately known as Team 8902, the Cosmic Goose. So love opportunities to come out here. I'm going to have to speak loudly over the loud robot here, but, so I apologize if you can't hear me. But I very much love opportunities like this since admittedly before coming here and really working with this group of students, trying to get the word out for all the competitions that we get to, this group not as known around the district. And especially in the last year or two, we've definitely been making a push to try and get as much information out here about the phenomenal work that these students do and, you know, getting as much information out there. Because beyond the robot that you see here, there's many, 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 many hours of hard work every single week from late August, as Mr. Cusack had talked about. Since we do not know the competition we are going to be participating in until the first week of September, and from there, it's full steam ahead throughout these six months in order to not only get a robot working, but do an enormous amount of outreach throughout the community and within the school environments to get students involved, interested, and overall enthused about STEM and robotics specifically. To that effect, we have the competitions that we participated in. As you can see, we have a robot here that picks up these cones and puts them on these poles. This is a simplified version of a longer-form competition that not only we did in November, December, but then we also hosted our own in February where we hosted about 22 different high schools and competed against them for, you know, different awards and such, one of which we won for our very successful programming element. Beyond all that, though, and the redesigning and mechanical work, these folks also participated in a bunch of outreach events, including working with thirds to fifth graders in our public library, the Glen Rock Public Library, participating in a STEM camp that they designed and put together throughout all three weekends in December. Then worked with professors like a professor from Kane's Industrial Design Program in order to come and critique their robot, and then even actually have his company sponsor our robot as seen by his company's name on the side there. And finally, working towards doing outreach in the form of a Makers' Day, which we'll be participating in the public library later this month, going out in the community and showing not only what our robotics team does, but what you can do from programming, engineering, design work. I mean, they designed the jerseys, like the whole nine yards. So it's an enormous amount of work for what technically is still just a club, since there's really no, it's a weird place where there's no varsity team and such. So the amount of work that they put in at this level is really admirable, and I want to shout them out, at the very least, the members here, this is only about two-thirds of our team, too, so it's really incredible work. But our captains, Julia Stutske, Joshua Ryan, Noah Lee, Alex Willoughby, and Craig Hillier, and then finally our multiple students that are not only here, but, you know, also at home. We have Joshua Chin, Kakuru Haraguchi, Alex Abala, Jonathan Disler, Evelyn Hu, Noah Imbar, Tamara Imbar, Yuha Kim, Caitlin Kim, Adrian Klug, Ryan Lee, Salvatore Sapienza, Ethan Sang, Joshua Yu, Daniel Peck, Junelia Renteran, Neil Saxena, Guang Shim, and Ella Rowe. So once again, thank you, folks, for, you know, letting us come out here, getting to show you what we've been doing and supporting us in our efforts. Thanks.
All right, folks, let's file in behind the robot here, okay?
I want to know who designed your shirts, really nice shirts.
Many different designs, the students came up with 40 or 50 different jersey designs before they signed on.
were invited. Paul Cusack, you're one of the most patient people I've ever met. Liz and I had tons and tons of questions. We really learned a lot, and really, the kids are to be commended. They give up a lot of their time, just like, you know, everyone talks about sports, the kids that worked on Cosmic Goose really give up probably more time than that and really dedicated to it. So I just really want to thank you, and I continue, wish you continued success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know I said at the last meeting, but since you're all here and I should have waited, but I just wanted to say thank you for inviting us. It was my first time, and I just loved it. As Karen said, I mean, we asked so many questions. I mean, I'm just lighting up, watching them, their enthusiasm, the support for each other, just watching the crowd and the fans and the parents and the siblings was just amazing. I can't wait for the next one, so please make sure that you let us know. But thank you so much, and best of luck to you all.
And I'll say, as a former robotics team member from class of 2001, it's really, it's really enjoyable to have watched you all perform and just the energy that you brought, and that was probably the most infectious part of the whole thing, just that you were really, really having fun with each other and, you know, continue to spread the good word. It's such a valuable team to be on, and I hope that you just continue to do it and encourage each other and the people that are behind you and just definitely continue to give back. It's really wonderful.
I would just add, the competition was really tough, too. There were a lot of private schools, large schools, and you guys really rocked it and represented Glen Rock, and it was so exciting, so way to go.
Thank you all very much.
All right, and then we have Coach Zim, Coach Zimmerman, and all she does is win state championships. So she's going to come on up. This is just the state, yeah. That's it, just.
Bush? Hello, is that better? I just wanted to first, before I start about these amazing bowlers, just thanking the board for meeting with us over in the fall and working out a coach's addendum to the contract, or however you like to phrase it. It was great working with you, and I really appreciate, you know, how much you support the coaches, and so it was a great thing in terms of encouraging us, and all the coaches definitely appreciate you stepping up and, and doing something about it, and I really appreciate that, so I appreciate that. It makes us easier for us to do our job, and I appreciate that. So here we go. This bowling team, this group has been together a few years, and we bowl as a league with four bowlers, varsity, and the others are bowling JV. But this season and last, we knew that the great things were going to happen. Our motto from the beginning of when I started coaching 10 years ago is every pin counts. And one of our biggest fans happens to be Dr. Charleston. So that was kind of exciting, seeing him come to our matches and everything, and we appreciate that. But what's wonderful about this group is they don't give up and they don't give in. And every pin counts has absolutely been what our season has been about, because we lost our league by four pins? Yeah, okay, great. We were 18-1. It's not like we were terrible, but we lost the league. So we said, you know what? We have other goals. We have counties, so let's go. And they didn't give up, and they didn't give in, and we got second in counties. That's pretty darn good. We are very pleased with that. I think we got last place a couple of years ago, so we are definitely on the way up. But again, we said, all right, every pin counts, let's not give up, let's keep going. We have our eye on state sectionals, which we had never won. And so we said, let's go for it. And they play in counties and states, they add a fifth bowler. So we now had to bring up a fifth bowler, he couldn't be with us tonight, but from JV, and he absolutely helped the team as well in both instances. But when it came down to states, we bowled a good, strong first game. We're like, there we go, that's the way to go. But then things happened, and the second game, not so, not so good. So this is a point where you decide how we'd, how do we want this to end? So we said, let's go for it. We're not even going to look at what everybody else is. You could see the scores of all the other schools, and I'm like, we're not even going to look at this. We just got to go and do what we do. And boy, did they do it. And every other school, almost every other school had finished by that point. So everyone's watching us, like, oh. And we broke a lot of hearts that day, and I don't mind. Our last game happened to be the best game that we had ever rolled. So that's what it means, and for me as a coach, all I want, I might not have been the best athlete, got kicked off more teams than I'd like to admit, but I also think it's important to have athletes and students really cherish themselves, do the best they can when, especially when it counts, and not to give up and not to give in and be determined and really hold that message going through whatever we do. And they rose to that occasion, killed that last game, and broke everybody's heart, and we won sectionals by two pins. Out of 2,844 pins, we won by two. So, yeah, we don't give up, all right? So this crew is such a wonderful group, I am going to miss them. They're all seniors, will make more. But at this point, they have been such an integral part of this bowling program from day one, and they train in the offseason, and, you know, it's just so great to see how they work together. Bowling is way more complicated than you'd think, and so they actually work together to solve problems and pick each other up, and, and if one guy had a tough game, the other guys are like, don't worry, we got you. So, you know, it was really great to watch them do this. So individually, we have Mark Davies, Andrew Lee, Owen Smith, Tim Ryan, and our fifth bowler, which is Ben Horn. And individually, three out of the four are first-team All-League, and Mark was a close second-team All-League, but top nine. Then Tim had the highest game score of 288 in our league. Andrew Lee had the highest average in our league, was the number two in the county for his average this year, and first-team All-County. And Owen Smith also is honorable mention All-County because at our state sectionals, the top 25 are the ones that move on to an individual tournament, and Andrew and Owen both did that. So it's really exciting. We got to go down to Bolero down in North Brunswick. It was unbelievable, great experience. And then Andrew and Owen got to compete in the individuals, which Andrew ended up fifth out of 100 coming in. So I mean, like, there's some really great things that have happened here, and I'm so proud of all these guys, and just, I will miss them terribly, and they're also really great people. And that's the best part, is when you look forward to the day, you've already worked eight hours, now I've got to go hang out with them? That's awesome. So this is great, and I'll miss them terribly. So this is the greatest bowling team we've had, so congratulations to them.
Oh, great.
that, like, where were you? Yeah, no, that was wonderful.
I will say that when you hear Coach, Coach Here speak about it, and she, when she says that every, every, every pin counts, sometimes, you know, when they don't get a pin down, they would run to me and say, oh my God, Coach Zimmerman's going to yell at me. She's like, really? So there's like a little bit of a difference there in terms of how intense Coach Zimmerman is during bowling matches. She's stomping around, she's throwing bowling balls, it's very violent, I think, so. But it is enjoyable to watch. Thank you, great job, everyone. Congratulations, have a good night.
Congratulations.
We'll see Coach back in the spring for another state championship.
I bet we will. More to come. All right, so that brings us, go down to general policy.
So the board has, in backup, the change to the policy that Rona had brought to our attention. Somehow, when we crossed over from Strauss estimate from school boards, there was a duplicate in terms of, I think it was number three, was, so we have a strike through there. And also, our board practice has been that regulations are approved after one reading, and that is at, after we approve the policies at the CAS that are approved at a regular meeting, and it's been that way for years, so we just wanted to keep the policy aligned to what the practice is of the board. So a really straightforward change. change.
I want to thank Dr. Charleston for noticing that there was a change here. Just a little advice, really, for all the board members. I think from switching from NJ SBA to Strauss Esme, although it's fine, every now and then you get this little quirk that they assume that we do things and we don't do things necessarily that way. So just keep an eye on policies as well. Thank you.
So back in October, we had, the board had discussed joining a class action lawsuit against Jewel Labs. So we were approached by a law firm out in California to join this class action lawsuit, which the board did. The board did join that. And there was a settlement reached, and the board today, in closed session, reviewed that settlement, which was in the amount of $13,538.49. And the board has agreed to accept that settlement. So we'll be filling out paperwork, forwarding that back to the attorney. There is a possibility for the board to get about 8%, 8.1% perhaps, in bonus payment funds, which would be down the road. We would anticipate this payment coming in the fall, and this would be deposited into our general account.
Anybody have any questions on that? Sorry, anyone have any questions on that? No? All right.
Okay, so as you may remember, last year, we updated the textbooks for the middle school math program, grades six, seven, and eight, and then also Algebra I, which is used by both eighth and ninth grade. And one of the things we hinted at then is that we would be looking at the high school math textbooks next. So now it's time to look those math textbooks, look at those high school math textbooks. It's built into our budget for next year, and we're bringing in Ms. Dela Fortuno to talk about why the changes, what the process was, who was on the committee, all of that, which, a lot of that you have in backup already. But we thought we'd bring her in so we could hear why this program and why now.
Hi, thanks so much for having me tonight. So as Mr. Van Ness said, we reviewed textbooks for the middle school and adopted new textbooks in the middle school. So to ensure that consistency and vertical articulation, we reviewed programs for the high school. So we've reviewed about nine different programs from various publishers. We did attend some presentations from some of the publishers. The reason why we're adopting these textbooks or new textbooks is to make sure that we continue that cycle of coherence through Algebra II. Algebra II is mandated by the, by the state, and so we wanted to make sure that from sixth to Algebra II, we have that coherence and that, you know, the programming for the students to transition between middle school and high school. So we did run a number of sessions with our committee, which consisted of high school teachers and middle school teachers to ensure that it did align with the middle school programming, just like what we did with the middle school. We had our K-5 coach on that as well. We did end up presenting our top couple of choices to the department, and everybody did vote on it and got a chance to look at the resources, both online and print materials. And then we convened to make our final decision. And ultimately, the teachers decided to continue with the Big Ideas program that we had at the middle school. Kids are used to that online platform, they're used to their resources, so they wanted to continue using that for geometry and Algebra II. It aligned with our philosophies, with our standards, and it builds on that concrete and conceptual understanding. So they ultimately decided to continue the Big Ideas program into the high school.
And it's my understanding you're planning to have both the online platform and some physical textbooks for those that work better from a physical book.
Exactly. So we'll purchase physical textbooks, and the online platform offers skill builders interventions. It offers that live chat, the live chat tutor online from 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM. There's a lot of online resources that kids will be familiar with, so as they go into high school, that would be great. But yes, we're also having the physical textbooks as well. Also included in, in all of this is training sessions. So it's really great that Big Ideas does include that training and that support through implementation, and that was one thing that the teachers really wanted, was the training. And Big Ideas offers in-person training, which is also a nice, a nice perk.
That's great. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Thank you for this information and the information that's in backup. It was great to see the pros and cons listed by the teachers, and to see that the teachers truly had input in this. Just curious, looking forward to next year, do we see more change, possible changes for textbooks in any other math? Are we finished with math now, as far as textbooks, or is there statistics coming, and, you know?
So ultimately, there are potential curriculum revisions for like the pre-calculus and potentially new pre-calc textbooks coming on. We do have a large portion of our students that go on to take a fourth year of math and take that pre-calc. So ultimately, we're kind of following the students up. So I do anticipate pre-calculus being the next step in the process. And this summer, we'll do curriculum revisions for geometry and Algebra II.
Okay. Anyone else? That was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michelle.
All right. We don't have anything for special services, so that leads us to management and community. I'll start with the calendar. So in backup, you have the calendar for discussion tonight. It does check a lot of boxes off for many of the people based on the data we got from Thought Exchange. I'm gonna ask Dr. Charleston to give us the highlights of that camp, of that calendar, and then we'll go around the room. Case can give your opinion, and that'll, we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Ms. Vindell. So the calendar has new teacher orientation, August 20th, 21st, and 22nd. It has 12-month, excuse me, has the teachers' reporting on Wednesday, the 28th, and Thursday, the 29th of the upcoming Labor Day weekend. Friday, only 12-month staff are required to report. Has a student starting the day after Labor Day, which is September 3rd. We go to November. It does have the long break in November with the 4th and 6th off. Those are the days wrapped around election and Dwali and the NJEA convention. We did, we do have a four-day weekend in February. So we have President's Day on Monday, February 17th, and on the 18th, we have that day off as well. And then we do graduate on Tuesday, June 24th. The last day for staff is Wednesday, 25th. The calendar has two emergency closing days built in. If more days are needed, they would be made up during spring recess, starting with the first day of spring recess, which is Monday, April 14th. There were no other changes that were really, they were never in consideration. October, January, March, May all stayed the same. So those are the only changes to the calendar. That's there for you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Charleston. So we'll start with Dr. Robinson, just opinions, comments.
Thank you. I think what I noticed about this calendar, especially compared to the previous one, and looking at some of the comments from the Thought Exchange, was that the district seemed that they really didn't want to start before August. Like, the kids wanted to, or they wanted their kids to start after the August and then after Labor Day. So seeing that change reflected here definitely feels like the community's, community, the district, the teachers' opinions were taken into account. I don't really have a lot to say about the rest of it. I think that it, it makes sense, and I think we spent time talking about how each of those days were chosen, like with the off, and seeing that there were some times where we had automatically days out. Like, I look at the November week and things like that. So it's kind of cohesive. And as well as taking into account some of the administration and the teachers' perspectives as to having, like, what the graduation date was gonna be. So I think that, seeing that, as well as seeing that they're relatively starting at the same time as they were last year, which seemed to work out fine. I'm encouraged by what I see here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Let's move to Mr. Hayward.
I like it. But first, two years away, right? This is not next year's calendar, right? Always remind everyone, because you always seem to think it's quick. No, I think it's a good compromise. It's a good, it's back to more of a traditional model, as it were. I won't belabor all the details. I think we've got graduation pushed back far enough, so it's not too deep into the summer, and I think we're starting late enough, so it's close to Labor Day. And it is a tough calendar year from a school side to figure out because of the early Labor Day. So I think it's perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Hayward. Ms. McNebo.
Okay, I had liked a calendar that started after Labor Day to begin with, so I'm very pleased with this. And we do know that if, if we use more than two days for winter, snow days, whatever they, if we can call them snow days, because we don't know what's gonna be in '24, '23, '24, '23, whatever this year is, that it does come off of the April break. And it's something we've done before. People don't like that as well, but it's, it's done that before, because it looks like January and February, we have a lot of school days, and those may be our snow days in there. So, but it's, it's, it's a good calendar to see for the problems that, that we're having. So I like this calendar.
Thank you, Ms. McNebo. Mr. Corey.
Yeah, thank you. It looks like we're fitting it in within the footprint, I would say, of what the school year needs to do. The community certainly made their voices heard. We put out a platform that allowed them to say even more. So whether that platform remains or not, it certainly did the job one time and allowed us to hear that feedback. We're trying a new thing. Let's see what happens on a presidential election year in November with this experiment, as we've, you know, changed things around. But seems like we have something that at least we can work with.
Okay. Let's continue over to Ms. Stevens.
I too like the start date in September, and I appreciate that the stakeholders were listened to from what they put in there. As Ed said, it's, it is a difficult calendar to work around. I mean, I don't, the alternative probably isn't the most ideal either. I just don't like that week, the time in February, but I understand. I understand we're off on Election Day, and I understand the teachers' convention and Dwali and, you know, it's a, this is a compromise, I believe, and I appreciate that. I know if we had those two days of school on the 4th and the 6th, I don't know that would make such a difference in, in the ending. So it is, it was a tough one to navigate around with the days that we have off. But I do, and I just want to let the public know, I appreciate everybody who voiced their opinion, participated in the Thought Exchange, because I think it's important that we hear their voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carr?
I too want to thank everybody who contacted the board, either via email or the Thought Exchange. I did read 99% of the comments. I appreciate Dr. Charleston hearing the community. I do think it's a much better calendar. I also go back and forth with that November week. We are really tied, our hands are tied by that. I mean, cost efficient, doesn't make sense to go in Monday and Wednesday. It's just hard to, to just give six days consecutive in November when people are just getting, the students are just getting into the swing of things, especially kindergartners. I work in a school, so I know what it's like. But again, what is the alternative? You know, we're gonna have probably comments about the end, graduation now being on a Tuesday. I have no problem with that. You know, tradition is tradition, but adjustments are adjustments. So I, but all in all, I really just want to say thank you for listening to, to the community. So I do appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Carcell.
Yeah, I'm also supportive of the, the new calendar. I think it's a kind of compilation of a lot of what was good in all of the versions we had. And, you know, I had similar kind of comments about November initially, but when you really look at it and even go, you know, based on experience of the past couple of years and the absences we see, you know, even if we were to give that be in session on the 4th and the 6th, I just feel like we just have so many families out because they would be taking the Friday. So realistically speaking, I think it's the best thing to kind of address it that way. Also, you know, I think, you know, learning's hard, teaching's hard, it's good to have breaks, and I feel like a lot of people actually raised that in Thought Exchange, those mental health breaks. So it, it does give us that. The other thing about Thought Exchange, I just wanted to say, you know, there were some kind of little adversarial comments against the board, I thought, and I just wanted to highlight or emphasize that it is our responsibility to talk about this stuff. Even if we decide to go traditional in what we did last year, I think, you know, we have to acknowledge that there, there are reasons to maybe move things up. I know we're not doing it, and I'm supportive of this, but we do have air conditioning now, so heat's not an issue. You know, there are, like I said, those learning, those breaks are good, and I just think it's good that we have conversations. So commend the president and everyone else to just bring these different scenarios to our attention for discussion. And I think all the perspectives were important to gather, so I do encourage people to continue sending in their comments. But, yeah, I like it. I think also, I know we had some students rate about extra time during February, so having that second day is kind of a nice, I don't know, treat. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carcell.
Okay, thank you. So when we initially started to talk about the calendar back in December, you know, that was the first time the board had calendars, right? It was like a starting point for us. So initially, looking at those calendars on paper, which one looked the best. And I think some board members felt, myself, that the, while the August start was early, that on paper looked the best. But obviously, we needed to get the feedback from the community, and really, in particular, hear from the GREA and how they, they would feel, what the issues they saw with that calendar that we maybe didn't anticipate before we could even come close to approving that. So I appreciate the process. I appreciate the Thought Exchange by getting the community's input, but also, especially the teachers. And in hearing that, I'm glad that the next calendar that was presented to us to discuss reflects those concerns that were raised. So I appreciate that we've heard the concerns of the parents and the teachers about starting that early in August. Even though it allowed us to get out earlier in June, it was not the way to go. So I do support this calendar. I like that the kids are starting the day after Labor Day. They get a full four days, so to get that, especially with the kindergartners, right? It gives them four full days to kind of go through a cycle and know what lunch is like in recess, as opposed to what it's been sometimes in the past. We have two days. It's two days in, weekend back. So I do support this. You know, November is difficult, like we've all said. We, we are, you know, our hands are tied contractually to some of these items that are in the calendar. And then also, you know, Election Day, we don't want to go back and open the schools. So unless we can ever get them out of the schools, which we haven't been able to do, that's a day that we're gonna continue to have off because of the issue we had one time at an elementary school. And we don't want to subject any of our kids to anything like that again. So while that's not optimal in November, I think that educationally wise, I think it makes the most sense to have those days in school later in, in the calendar. So, long story short, I do support it, and I, I do hope that the Tuesday graduation has been vetted out with administration as far as graduation and eighth grade, and all those things are going to be handled appropriately. Grad ball, I don't think should be an issue as well. But again, I know tradition is tradition, like Ms. Carr said, but I think that graduating on a Tuesday, it makes sense here, and having those two snow days.
Yes. All right. So I also... So, I also appreciate the community's engagement with this and with us. And based on everybody's comments, I do think that we have, I think we have a majority consensus. I support the majority. So, based on that, I do feel comfortable putting this calendar on the agenda for our March 27th agenda as a draft for board approval. Again, as Mr. Hayward said, this is for '24, '25, so not this September, but the following one. And it'll be on the agenda for 3/27. Dr. Charleston.
Sinead. I'm sorry. I had a question. I apologize. If graduation is on a Tuesday for the high school, for this, you know, graduating class, when is eighth grade promotion and fifth grade promotions going to be held?
It would just be the same schedule, like, so if...
So, it was usually Tuesdays and Tuesday and Thursday. If Tuesday was a rain day, it was Wednesday, obviously, and a fourth...
Yeah, so it would be Tuesday, Wednesday rain date for middle school, then Thursday graduation, that's how it's been. So, now it would be Monday, eighth grade, and maybe Friday.
And Tuesday.
Is graduation for the high school.
So, Monday, grad, eighth?
No, no. So, Friday, eighth grade graduation. Monday's a rain day. Tuesday's high school, or promotion, sorry. Yes. And then, let's start over. Thursday will be fifth grade. Friday will be eighth grade. Monday will be a rain day. Tuesday will be high school graduation, rain or shine.
Okay. And just one more question. How does that affect the rental of the equipment? If, because now, because we used to do it for, although it really doesn't, because they can pick it up anyway. Never mind.
Yeah. It's out there for a while.
Never mind!
Can I question a Friday graduation or a promotion for eighth grade? We're doing it on a Friday night. That's the, and that's the Sabbath?
Okay.
Is it possible to move it? You know, I mean, if we're going to be renting, since we're renting the furniture, make it on Thursday for eighth grade and just move it down, so it's away from Friday?
Yeah, as we get closer, we can, yes.
Just as a comment there.
Very good point, Ms. McNabola.
Just one more question. When would this calendar be shared with the public, on that Friday before the 27th?
Correct. So, what is that, the 24th? Is that right?
Yes, I think so.
Yep, that is correct. Any other questions or discussion for the calendar? All right. So, then, it's you.
We also discussed in closed session, shared services agreement with Peramus Board of Education for the Director of Community Relations. That shared services agreement will be on the March 27th agenda for board approval. We anticipate Peramus approving that at their April meeting. Once Peramus approves it, again, after the board approves it on the 27th, they will then advertise for the position with the hope of having someone in place, obviously, to start July 1st, but to hire by the end of May.
Thank you. Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Just for old business. So, the Rutgers survey process is ongoing, and we recently had a, some focus groups with parents, staff, admin, teachers, and we got some great feedback, and we're trying to figure out how to incorporate it into the presentation that is scheduled for the March 27th meeting. You know, just as an important thing for us to know, as well as the community, we're not there to make recommendations. We're kind of just there to present the data and then see what you can do with the data. So, it's kind of an interesting process, just as like an initial step of evaluating this. So, yeah, that's it.
Turn my mic on, so sorry. All right, thank you, Dr. Robinson. Look forward to that presentation. And that brings us to business, fiscal management.
All right. I provided the board with the backup associated with the tentative budget. The day has come, and it happens to be this evening, where we're going to be approving the tentative 2023-24 budget. Total general fund budget's $56,964,275. Local tax levy for the general fund's $51,191,413. That represents a 3.42% year-over-year increase, general fund to general fund. Special revenue fund totals $759,913. Debt service to fund previous principal and interest payments associated with referendums. Budget totals $4,281,263. General debt service tax levy necessary to support the debt service principal and interest payments is $2.6 million. Total tentative budget, $62,5451. Again, the board's had the draft budget documents since our March, excuse me, February Cal meeting. I have entertained questions over the past month. Just to highlight, on the appropriation side, one of the biggest challenges in relation of the 23-24 budget was function 291, employee benefits, namely the 15% increase in health benefits. That's going to, has, will be starting, has started January this past, and then we anticipate another 15% increase for January 1st, 2024. For those of you that had, have had some longevity on the board, you'll know if you look at that very same line, very same document for the past three to four, possibly five years, your year-over-year employee benefits has generally been flat. So, it certainly has been an obstacle. We dealt with it via a adjustment for healthcare costs. And lastly, I'll say the 23-24 tentative budget, as it's presented to you this evening, I have the utmost confidence in. I, you know, when you're putting together a budget, many of you know that you're not only looking at the here and now next year, you look for sustainability, sustainability in the out years, and I'm very confident that this budget best positions the district for the 2024-25 school year. Having said that, I'll turn that back to the board president.
Thank you. Mr. Rinderknecht.
Would it really go back to operations, to the...
Operations, I'm going to keep short and sweet. I think I spoke about everything during the audit present, excuse me, the construction presentation with the auditor and Mr. Much. The only thing I want to note, and Dr. Charleston was kind enough to speak at our last Cal meeting during my absence, is the fact that we'll be proceeding with our investment-grade audit in relation to the energy audits and the board previously engaged Collier's Engineering to complete that audit, so that'll be the next step in the process.
Thank you, Mr. Rinderknecht. Does anybody have any questions?
It's just back at the budget, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make it clear to the community, the referendum from 2019 where we were under budget, that money that we're giving back is reflected in these numbers that you have here, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, it's a combination of not only that particular referendum, but the most recent referendum. So, there's roughly $2.5 million that'll continue to be returned to the taxpayers. So, when I talk about sustainability, you have a budgeted fund balance in debt service for $500,000.
Yeah.
You're likely going to see a number comparable to that for the next four to five years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. McNabola?
When are we going to get the estimate from the town, so we know our numbers there?
I've received the net assessed values from the borough, and I'll be calculating those figures, and we'll be presenting those figures along with our budget presentation on, at the May 8th meeting.
Okay.
The positive is the total net assessed values for the town has once again increased year-over-year.
At least on my block. Not my house, but my block.
Anyone else? All right. So, I need a motion to discuss B1 and B2. Ms. McNabola, seconded by Ms. Scarpelli. I know we don't typically like to take action at Cal's, but it is important that we approve this tentative 23-24 budget. So, if anyone has anything to say, otherwise, oh, Ms. Carr.
I just want to clarify, as of now, do we have any idea? We saw 3.42%. Is it going to be lower? Is it going to be about that, the increase? I mean...
Historically, again, I, when Ms. McNabola asked the question about net assessed values for the borough, historically, year-over-year, you're going to see a tax increase on average assessed home less than the 3.42% general fund year-over-year tax levy.
Okay.
That's how I'm going to answer that question.
Right. But I just want, I mean, you did mention it, there are people watching, and so I just want to make it clear that it's not 3.42. It's, could be lower.
Yes.
Usually, generally, it's lower.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Ms. Carasella?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. McNabola?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell.
Yes. That brings us to our HIB resolution. So, I need a motion to affirm our HIB decision. Ms. Carr, seconded by Dr. Robinson. In call.
Ms. Carasella?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. McNabola?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes.
That brings us to our other, does anyone have liaison reports? Anything else to add? So, I just have one. I had sent, this quick, but I had sent the Ad hoc Liaison Committee, I'm looking at you guys right now, a Google Doc of our recommendations. So, as long as you guys don't have any comments or issues with it, I can send it to the rest of the board, and we'll have that conversation at our next Cal meeting. If you guys have anything, just send it back, let me know. All right. So, that brings us to our public comment for the night. These are for agenda items only. State your name and address. I will open up public comment at 8:21. All right. I feel like no one's going to get up, so I'll close it at 8:21. Do you want to say, do you want to add anything, or do you want me to adjourn it?
Thank you.
No problem.
Regarding the Nabisco upcoming demolition, Mr. Rinderknecht and myself, Mr. Much met this morning to discuss it. We know the implosion date is April 15th. We haven't changed any of our plans in terms of changing all the filters. There are, there will be one thing that we are adding. We are adding security so that no one goes on the property from Friday through the implosion on Saturday. And then, Mr. Much's crew will go through the building, because again, all the dampeners are closed, but we'll change all the filters out, make sure everything is okay to reopen schools on that Monday. But we just want to let the public know that no one will have access to the property from the evening of the 14th through, really, that weekend. And we're notifying anyone who uses a gym and things like that as well.
Yeah, I guess, bring that to Rab about the fields. Right, do they use the fields in April?
Yeah, no, it was baseball. Baseball opening day was scheduled, and they were going to do the 15th. So, baseball's already moved the parade to Memorial, but they were talking about still holding games.
So, I just want to report back to Rab that the school property is completely closed down.
Right, so no games on Saturday, the 15th. The 16th too, or the 15th, just the 15th?
Just the 15th, but let's just say that weekend, just to be safe, because we have people there, be working there, we want to make sure the building is clean. Yeah, we don't anticipate any issues whatsoever, but we don't want people pulling up lawn chairs and watching the demolition from the field, you don't want kids out there playing. So, again, we're just shutting it down. And Mr. Much did say he would let all the people who had access, or were going to use the fields or the gyms or whatever, he would make them aware of that. We are meeting again in a week or so to continue to discuss preparations, but for now, we feel like we're pretty set.
Thanks for the update, Dr. Charleston.
Did they say anything about how long 208 would be closed? Did they say anything about how long 208 would be closed?
All the information that we have is what you have, which is in the FAQ. We don't have any other information other than that.
Ms. Molly? I was, I was told by an official in Glen Rock that approximately about four hours.
Great things. I know it's not, it doesn't, you know, affect our school, but, good question, thank you.
All right. If that's it, I need a motion to adjourn. Ms. McNabola, seconded by Mr. Hayward. All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you all, be safe getting home, hopefully.